Ian in council chambers, is that you? Carl and Aaron.
Hello.
How are you?
Hi there.
You're all right. I've got a new job, so I don't know if I can like be in person as much anymore.
Well, great to have you remote. How's the new job going?
It's okay. Yeah, I'll talk to you more about it sometime, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll look forward to that. Aaron, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Good.
I was able to connect with Ian for a little bit before a meeting, so we had a productive phone call today. He had some really good ideas, so I'm excited to share them.
I'm so glad to hear that. That's awesome. That's really cool. I'm excited to hear them too. Just checking in to see if our audio is working in council chambers from those online.
I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, delightfully. Hello and greetings to all. Thanks for being being here. It's good to good to see you all from far.
Yeah. We're so lonely today. There's.
All hiding in the audience.
I will wait for a few more members to join online. I feel like we need.
Rip one? Doesn't look like it. Six people?
We've got, yeah, like Aaron and Carl are online right now.
Is there a way to see who's online? Because I'm only seeing three.
Carl.
Aaron was just on.
I'm still here.
I'd have to change that view.
Six is enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see him. Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Derek Hoffbauer, Vice Chair of COBAC, and today I'll be sitting in for Liz Woodfin, who is our chair. She's unable to make it today. So welcome to City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, February 27, 2025. We are here in the council chambers. We do have folks online. And we're gonna do a roll call for committee members. And let's start in person. Andrew, take a sip of his water and then he can, although he just spilled it. You ready, Andrew?
Yeah, every time I try to open this, always. Anyways, I'm here, Andrew. Sitting in a wheelchair, wearing brown glasses, blonde hair, blue eyes, black shirt.
I mean, Isaacson, he/him pronouns.
Plaid shirt, short hair and a beard in chambers.
And Derek Hoffbauer, brown hair, glasses, kind of a plaid checkered shirt. He/him pronouns in chambers.
John?
John Halen, he/him pronouns. I'm in council chambers. I'm that big red dot to the left of your screen if you're looking.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Stephanie Utzman in chambers. And she/her pronouns, long brown curly hair, glasses and a brownish toned cardigan.
Alright, thanks. Let's go online. Let's do Carl, Aaron and Amanda in that order.
Hey, this is Carl Burnett. Joining online, I am. My pronouns are he/him. I'm a white guy with a beard and glasses and a blue and red striped sweater today.
Hi, this is Aaron Rivers. I'm online. I am a white male with brown and gray hair. I am wearing a green sweater with headphones today.
Hi, Samantha Hamer. I'm a a white woman. I have long gray or medium length graying hair, wearing reading glasses and a green sweatshirt. And I go by she/her pronouns.
Thanks, Amanda. Cassandra.
Oh, thank you, Derek. We also have Alyssa on for for your awareness after. Cassandra Kehoe, Equity and Accessibility Manager. I am a white Latina woman, sitting remotely, floating around as an Arizona ghost on your screen. Very pleased to be here with you. I'm wearing the blue blazer, long brown hair.
Let's go to Alyssa. Alyssa, your audio is working. Doesn't look like you're muted. But I'm checking in to see if you can hear us okay. Maybe you could put a thumbs up. If you're able to use any of your emojis on Zoom. Yeah, she's gonna hand raise. Okay, while we can wait, Alyssa, to get your audio working, feel free to jump in and provide an introduction. Okay, well, let's get started with the meeting. There's a City of Bend land acknowledgement. Would anyone like to volunteer to read that? John usually does it, so let's look for somebody else. I mean, he's eloquent.
I I can do it.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Sure, alright. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homeland of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1885, while retaining regular and customary northern. Oh my God, I'm gonna butcher this. I'm so sorry. Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It's also important to note that the Calamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Cilio Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah.
Okay, on to approval of the meeting minutes. So these are the minutes from our January 23 meeting. Any comments or suggested revisions on those minutes?
This is John Halen. I motioned to approve the minutes from January 23, 2025.
Okay, I'll second. Alright, Ian second. Okay, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes, June 23, raise your hand or give us a thumbs up or. Alright, let's pass. Thanks. Hey, public comment. Cassandra, did we have any written public comment that was submitted to COBAC?
No, not at this time, Derek. We have a public inquiry a little bit later that I have during my manager update, but and there is also no one in attendance online for public comment.
Okay. There's one person here in chambers, so. Okay, well, we will skip over that one pending no public comment. So next topic is the alternate meeting dates, and we do need to vote on this. And we're looking at taking a summer break, give everybody a little time for some vacation time or spend some time with the family. So we're looking at July 2025 as taking that month. And we're looking at usually the third Thursday of that month is where COBAC falls. So is everybody okay with that? I think the other choice was August, but I think Liz had a conflict in August and I'm 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 pretty busy in August with some some work at CET. So we all good with July? Oh, Carl, go ahead. You got your hand raised?
If we did that, any idea when the August meeting would be?
Would probably be, Cassandra, do you have that third Thursday of August?
Yes, let me get that, Carl. It would have been the August meeting would be August 28, 2025.
Okay, I can probably make that work.
Wait, so this is Amanda. I'm sorry. Just to be clear, are we talking about not having a meeting in July but having a meeting in August? Or the reverse?
Um, well, it's up to, I think, the committee members. I think we were honing in on July because I think Liz couldn't make August.
Not having a meeting?
Yeah.
The proposal is to skip in July and meet in August, right?
No.
So what? By date. It would July.
The proposal is, what I heard was to to take a break in in July.
Yes, you're correct. Yep, sorry. I'm off track on that. Yeah, so the August meeting was the 21st, Cassandra. So we would take the break in July. Everybody good with that? And then reconvene in August?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, let's do a vote on that one. Anybody entertain left in for having the break in July and the meeting start?
Oh. Sorry, I didn't mean to raise my hand. I was trying to like.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just voting.
I motioned to skip the July 25 meeting and resume meetings in August.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of skipping July and having our summer meeting in August 28, 2025? Raise your hand if you agree.
Agreed.
Like, we are all in agreement on that. Thank you. Okay, so the November and December meetings, I think we have some options here for picking and choosing a date. And Cassandra, can you remind the committee, are we needing to vote on these as well?
Yes, please, Derek. Thank you. And the the question before the group is just whether if there's any preference between scheduling on November 6 or November 20, and that can be open to to conversation or debate.
Yeah, and I guess I would, this is Derek, entertain that, you know, if if we want to kind of keep to our cadence on the, in terms of like the time of the month that we meet. I mean, I guess my preference would be to to hone in on those latter dates. However, you know, December 18th is kind of getting into Christmas time, so that, you know, that could be a variable there.
I I agree.
May maybe.
The two later date.
Okay.
Just for the case.
Yeah. Because then we'd have to maybe like do a little bit of a reset in terms of.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think I'm I'm fine with the later dates.
Yeah, and I'm I'm around for those times as well. John?
Make either work.
Definitely. Okay, so let's let's stick with the regular cadence of the schedule, so we can kind of hone in on that like later part of the month and keep that consistent. And so what I'm hearing from the committee is that we're gonna have the November meeting on November 20 and the December meeting, December 18. So if anyone would like to motion that for approval?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the two later meeting dates for November and December.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay.
Alright, so all in favor of pushing the November meeting to the 20th, December meeting to the 18th? Raise your hand. Say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. You? Okay, COBAC workman, we're speeding along here. Maybe gets you guys out a little early since it's been nice out. Okay, so we have a few. We approved the work plan at the last meeting. There's a few topics on here, one being Sprout Film Festival. We wanted to talk about attendance, invitation, any tabling opportunities. And, you know, with that and with COBAC, you know, being out in the public and, you know, tabling and being in advance, we talked about creating a COBAC pamphlet or like a little leave behind to kind of promote awareness of the committee and the work that this committee does in the City of Bend on accessibility. And then we had previously discussed the Breaking Barriers Conference and then the Walk and Roll, and I don't see Whitney on, and I haven't connected with her with potential dates, but I can do that this week and bring that information back to our meeting next month. So with that, do we want to have a discussion about the Sprout Film Festival? Amanda, is that you leading that effort?
Um, sort of, I guess, yeah. Informally. Um, yeah, so I spoke with.
Oh, she froze. Mandy, you froze.
For your area of the tower. There's space for five tables, and we thought if we have enough people who are interested in sponsoring, then we could split the tables, so up to 10 people sponsoring, so it would be it'd be $100 to sponsor. And diversibility and COBAC could share a table. And then, yeah, if we can have flyers, something like, it was just a little takeaway, maybe like even I don't know, a merch item. That'd be super cool. I have no idea what COBAC's budget is, but and then again, it's April, oh shit, April 9th, right? April 8th or 9th? I don't I didn't bring my notes with me, but
Mandy, I think you froze. Not that it helps me saying that for everyone. Reciter of the obvious.
In and out, Amanda, maybe. Elevator pitch. You could always turn your video off too, and that might help with your.
Okay, so there's a table option. And there's an option to, or the other thing that we wanted to that we talked about doing is just a way to get the City of Bend, like employees with the City of Bend to participate in the attending it, so. Yeah, I mean, because Cassandra could speak to some of the ideas we had for that. My, I think one of my ideas was kind of like a buddy system, so to speak, like you know, talking with one department or like a department head and then suggesting that they like, you know, that they bring a friend. So yeah. What else, Cassandra? What else did we talk about?
We talked about that. We talked about clear invitations to certain departments we think interact with and have kind of the intersection with accessibility at the city that might benefit from learning more about the Sprout Festival. And then Amanda, did you, do we know which movies are going to be showing yet during the matinee and then the evening session? Potentially to be continued. But yeah, so I think truly today, what what we'd like to identify is if, in addition to Amanda's leadership in this area, I know Liz Woodfin is interested in being a part of this. If there are any other COBAC members who want to join in this and the planning and kind of issuing invitations to city staff, helping me work on the drafting of a COBAC kind of pamphlet or quarter page or takeaway. Not unlike what we've done previously for the walk and roll. And then if anyone wants to sign up for tabling at either the matinee or evening showings, I know Amanda will be holding it down with the diversibility and COBAC together, but it'd be great to have a couple of COBAC members join. And again, we've got the budget to be able to cover tickets and the admission fee and anything you'd like to do if you'd like to to come through and join. So yeah, I think Derek, if we just can identify if anyone else is interested, and then what kind of interest they have in 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 the volunteering. So yeah, I think Derek, if we just can identify if anyone else is interested, um, and then what kind of interest they have in, in, in the volunteering.
Well, this is Stephanie, um, and I would be, uh, real very interested to be on the breaking committee, um, as well, um. Help me to draft the pamphlet and then I could volunteer and table at ten.
Super cool. We can get kind of a side subcommittee going, so.
Andrew going. Yeah, this is Andrew speaking. I would be interested to help with the pamphlet drafting and then I think potentially I could make either. Time work for tabling.
Yay.
Well said.
So for a follow-up, Derek, I'll, I'll, um, I'll create a little, uh, just a. I don't know if we call it like a, a formal subcommittee, but just a, um. An email thread with Stephanie and Cassandra and Liz and Andrew and we'll. And then we'll just share with you guys what we, uh. What we need help with.
Amanda, I'll work with you offline to make sure we do everything according to, to, uh. Guidelines for public, um, public meetings and see if we have enough folks at warrants, uh, quorum, and if we need to actually have a subcommittee for it, but. Let's talk about offline. So I'm, I'm so pleased to see the, the interest and I'm looking forward to this.
Yay. Thanks, you guys.
Hey Cassandra, going back to the sponsorship concept for the hundred dollars, I mean, I, I. Think that would be a nice gesture, but is that something that we would want the committee to? Discuss and take action on, or is that a city event decision?
That's a great question, Derek. I need to look into, um, what, what are, I don't want to say regulations, but maybe just what the parameters are insofar as sponsorship. I. I don't foresee that there'd be any issue with it, but I will check in, um, just with legal and, and other colleagues to make sure that that's acceptable. I don't see any. Um, problem, um, and I know that we do have some budget, um, allocated to Quebec. To support with the, um, creation of those pamphlets, potentially some swag or some takeaway things that you all talked about. And then for that sponsorship to be supportive of community. So, yeah, thank you, Derek.
And Amanda, um, and I can't see if you're still on there. I'm, I'm guessing you are, but is there? I, I doubt there you are. Line for the sponsorship. Uh, decision. That you know of?
No. No, there's no timeframe.
I mean, I would think if we were gonna do that, probably the sooner the better, right? So they're, you know, putting logos out or sponsored by and.
Yes, yeah. Um. We don't have, yeah, we don't have deadlines for that yet. It's pretty informal and full access is not like. Uh. They're not super big on sponsorship, um, not because they're opposed to it, just, uh. I don't, I find it confusing, but I'm not really, uh. This is sort of a newish thing for them to have, like to have sponsors, so.
Okay. All right. Well, let, let's table the spot. Um, until the next meeting, Andrew will do a little research to see if we have the budget and, um. I guess support from the city to, to move forward in that direction. Uh, but thanks for those volunteering to do that. And then, um. Cassandra, if you want to loop me into any pamphlet design, I can work on that. I have a lot of conflicts around the April eighth day, um. With legislative work that's going on in Salem, so I'm not going to commit to that yet, but I'm hopeful that I can make, um, one of those shows, so.
That, that sounds great. And ideally, um, for the pant, the pamphlet, my, my hope is that, um, we'd be able to have like a, a copy of it available for everyone in the March meeting. Um, before we go to print, it sounds like very intense, but it's really just printing things off, but like before we go to press. Um, but we would have that pamphlet available for committee feedback and review, um, and any kind of edits too. And I'll, I'll allocate time if that sounds like a good plan for, for use of our time in the March meeting.
Yeah, I think that is, if we could carve that out as an agenda time, because we'll need to have it finalized soon thereafter to be able to print it and get it ready for you. Uh, Carl, go ahead.
I wondered if we wanted to have any discussion or if we have the time now to do that about what the messaging for that pamphlet should be?
Yeah, good question, Carl. Um, yeah, I mean, we're doing good on time, so I. The more that we could talk about it.
Cause like, I mean, we remain a, a city committee that is, exists, you know. To serve the city, but we've talked about how important it is to also be like a conduit for. Residents. And I suppose out of town people even who have disabilities to be able to like. Make their voices heard, um. To the city, right? So, um. I think we should say something about that, like, look, we're here to make. Uh. City government and just to make city government better for work better for people with disabilities, but also just to make. Experience of living in or visiting Ben better for people with disabilities. So, um. Like here are some ways that like we can be available to you. Without trying to make it sound like we're like a full service organization that will solve all your problems.
Yeah, no, I like that, Carl. Um. And I guess Cassandra, who would be taking the lead on this? Is this the city kind of? Uh, drafting that, or do you need any assistance from the committee in terms of drafting it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a, a shot at the first draft. Um, and I, I love Carl, I love that angle. I think having. Like a real call to engage with Quebec and then also bring awareness to issues. Um, I, I think it is the, the entirety of. How we become more accessible doesn't happen by, you know, just city staff or myself being like, we think that these are the initiatives. It's gotta be that motto of nothing about us without us. Like it has to be. It has to be commu- community driven and that's what the purpose of Quebec is, right? And so. It's so cool to be able to have literature that would encourage that kind of civic discourse and engagement, Carl, that you're talking about. So yeah. I'll take a, I'll take, it's exciting. I'll take a, I'll take a shot at the draft, um, and then, um, the individuals, uh, the committee members that have been. Interested in potential draft language. I'll email you and then you can email me back and then we'll have the proposed draft that everyone can take a look at. During the March meeting, if that sounds okay to you, but open to any suggestions.
Yeah, maybe we could have a, this is Derek, maybe have like a photo there. I think we had some good photos of the, the walk and roll event or. Anything that, you know, we've all kind of done like outside of the group, like walking the streets, I think would be good to include just as a nice visual.
Derek, if I could, is that something Quebec would be interested in? I don't want to force, of course, a photo shoot on you, but as I'm looking to like. Update particular city, um, accessibility websites and, um, kind of literature in our, our sites, like it would be great to have that kind of stock. Photo of actual citizens and actual folks in our community with disabilities that is not just like, you know, it's not part of Ben. So. If the committee is interested, I think we could probably schedule like a, an informal photo shoot or something like that to. And, and from the walk and roll in other areas, but for members that maybe weren't able to be present. That might want to be, like, it would not be something you have to do, but just, it's something I thought of before, but never want to make anyone feel uncomfortable. Also knowing. We could take out identifying factors apart from the visuals. It wouldn't need to have names or, um. Designating information attached to it. I'm, uh, cognizant of, of the climate now too. So that's up to, up to the group, of course.
Yeah, no, I like that idea. I mean, maybe if, if, I think it would be hard to like schedule something like that and get everyone to come on a particular day, but maybe if folks made an effort. To make it in person at the next meeting, to do something like following our meeting and go outside and. Have a photo or something like that. So maybe that's kind of a call for members to. To come to council chambers next month. Do that. Sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, let's move on to breaking barriers. And Amanda, I think I'm going to put you on the spot for this one again, to give a little lay of the land on where we are with this.
Yeah, um, I think where we are is deciding if we want to, um. If we want to present on, um. Or send in a proposal for presenting on, um. Civic engagement. I do know that. Uh, there's a proposal going in from High Desert Self Advocates, um, so who will have kind of a similar. Uh. Presentation in so much as like, but coming from their perspective of how, um. How to advocate from that self advocacy, um, place. So. I don't know. Is there, is there a big interest in that? Um. Or the, you know, the other thing we've kind of gone back and forth about is having a, um, having a space or a table space there. Um, which I kind of, I'm in a. I align with, with where Carl's been talking about, like, because breaking barriers is really becoming more of a, um. It's not even just regional anymore. It's becoming more of a statewide, um, conference. And, um, I think. We're talking about, you know, people are coming over from the valley, um, definitely the tri-county area, so it's not just, um. Like, it wouldn't be just like ci- you know, city of Bend or even like city of Redmond. Um. So I think we, we just need to talk about that, like how, um. Yeah. What do we want to get out of it, you know? Um.
This is Cassandra and Derek and Amanda, like also just to the point of like, is there sufficient interest from Quebec members? Um, and it's okay if there's not. This is a, this is a. Um, if, if we're finding that potentially those two sessions might be too closely related and that's really what you wanted to present on. Um, it's, it's completely open. Don't, don't feel like it's a mandatory item. I think it was just a nice opportunity. Um, and, and a good, a great audience. And I know many of you will be attending in, in different capacities in your, your employment and your advocacy spaces. So. Um, just also to float that out there.
Yeah, and I, this is Derek. I guess my, my concern is April twenty second, we're gonna blink and it's gonna be April. So, given that we need to, you know, work on a, on a pamphlet. And have that ready. I mean, I think at a minimum, if we had our pamphlet ready, we could have that for like our community partners or our Quebec members who were there that already have a table and may be able to like. Oh, let's go back. Oh, this is this committee I'm on, that, you know, does this work in the city event or something like that. So. At a minimum, we can have a presence there just via our existing members who are gonna be tabling there. Um. Yeah, I think we'd need to figure out pretty quickly, like if we were gonna give a presentation, like who's gonna give it? What are the topics? How long is it? Amanda, are these typically like sixty minute, forty five minute presentations?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's two different lengths. One is, one is an hour and, and another one is, um, I believe ninety minutes. So. Um. Yeah, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you, um, Derek. I think it's a lot to ask, um, definitely. Uh, of me at, at the moment to be able to, to spearhead that in addition to, um, Sprout Film. So, um. And I feel like Sprout Film is more, um, aligned with, you know, where our work plan goals. So. Um, as far as like, you know, creating that inclusive community and culture of inclusivity, um, and then. I'm happy to take, uh, whatever Quebec, uh. Merch or and or, um. Flyers. To, to have at the diversibility table at Breaking Barriers, so.
Yeah, is everybody in agreement with that, that that would be a pretty big lift for someone to talk for sixty minutes about Quebec?
I think I would die if I had to talk for sixty minutes about anything.
Doesn't have to just be about Quebec, right?
No, I think we had talked about like, uh, sorry, this is Amanda. Again, it, uh, we had talked about, um, like presenting on like. How to engage in your, your civic, like, leadership or like, you know, how, um. Like, how do you, how do you be a good John Halen? You know, like, how does that, how does that work? What does that look like? Um. Where do you go? Who do you, you know, uh? Who do you contact? How do you write a letter? Like, that kind of thing. Um.
Yeah, this is Stephanie. I think, uh, a kind of a long length of what Amanda was just saying. When I've gone to conferences around the nation for like assistive technology or. Um, disability related conferences, I, I was really turned off on Arizona. There's the, Arizona's got one. Um, and they're notorious for this. Um, they have a really great AT community. But a lot of their presentations were really geared toward navigating the Ariz- Arizona. System. So for those of us traveling from out of state. Or outside the state of Or- or, um, Arizona, it wasn't really relevant. And so when we are thinking about putting together a potential, um. Presentation at a conference that's not just a local, um, visited conference, I think. One thing for us to consider is, yeah, how to, to gear so that it's more universally accessible to bringing. Information back to their community. So whether it's how to be an effective advocate, how to engage with your legislators. Or if we had a program that we were implementing here in Ben that was really successful, how could you replicate that in your own community? And those are the takeaways that I think are more meaningful for people. So it's just kind of food for thought for future, um, years, if we do a table or a, a presentation of Breaking Barrier. Yeah, I think that's a little bit to. Fight off. For now.
Yeah, this is Derek. I, no, I, I appreciate that. And I, I mean, I think that would involve probably multiple people and a lot of coordination on like, what are the main topics? What are the takeaways and probably delving into others' work and not, you know. Necessarily what Quebec's doing, but like a gen- a more kind of a general topic. So. Yeah, what, from what I'm hearing. From the committee is at a minimum, we try to have our flyer there, um, support it just through having a little bit awareness of Quebec. Um, if the opportunity does come and there is interest from somebody to lead a presentation, organize it. Create slides, talking points, things like that, you know, that, that's, that could be up for discussion at the next meeting, but I think at this point. And we're all pretty busy, so I, you know, I think unless anybody wants to jump in that space. Um, I think we kind of default to, uh, having kind of a minimal presence there unless we hear otherwise. Okay, we good with Breaking Barriers? All right.
Um, Derek, really quick, this is Amanda online. Sorry, I just, I just remembered as I'm like, uh, writing my notes, um, that my. Uh, I think it's super clever catchphrase for our, um, attempting to get city event, um, employees engaged with. Um, Sprout Film is plus one for all. So it was like, I was saying like, bring a buddy, but it, I was like. We connect with the city of Ben employees and say, bring your plus one, um, and, um. And cut, you know, come to Sprout Film. So again, we'll meet as a subcommittee and talk more about that, but I just remembered that that was, that was what it was, is plus one for all. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Miller. Okay, uh, walk and roll. Like I said, we don't have any dates right now. I do know Commute Options, um, typically does their kind of walk and roll events in early May. So we have that, um, tentatively scheduled as either probably the first week of May and the second week of wet May. We have not worked on the logistics. Our transportation subcommittee has not met to discuss that, um. So we could have a discussion here today or we could, you know. Wait and let, you know, let me follow up with Whitney to kind of see if we, we have a firm timeline and maybe we could put out some concepts at the next. Quebec meeting about locations. I know in the past we've talked about Hawthorne Station, we've talked about, um. Which we have a lot of new amenities there that would be great to showcase. Um, we could even do bus rides. I think the walk and roll also fits with bus riding because the buses roll on the road, so would need to change the name of the event. Um, but you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity to, to do some creative work around that space. I think. If we still have Carl on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah. Um. So Carl, again, you, you had talked about maybe like even looking at kind of central Ben district as an opportunity. It's close to Hawthorne Station. Um, we, you know. Um, we, you know, we could even ride the the bus line there, because we did kind of west downtown Galveston last time. Was to move these events around in different places of the city to look at different infrastructure. And.
Yeah, let's, let's you, me and um Whitney. Um, get together like in the next week or something online, um, or in person and just um, come up with some dates. And um, and try to workshop that that idea about uh, about the route, I think that's good. It's a good place to start.
Yep, and I think, you know, the lessons learned from last year, great turnout, um, but we want, you know, a few more folks coming. And then just a little more awareness about like what, you know, what is the goal of the event, what are the that we can share with city staff? Um, what are the outcomes you can share with the community members about providing input into, you know, infrastructure-related. Um, issues or, you know, developments or new projects and things like that, so. You know, I think kind of honing in on that, on that focus area, what we want to achieve with the event. Is kind of the next step after figuring out the date and the actual location, and then we can start to kind of work on the messaging on that. So we'll do a placeholder now for the first two weeks of May. Um, Carl, I'll connect with Whitney tomorrow, um, and just to kind of see if they have anything tentatively planned through commute options. Um, and then we can circle back with, uh, I'll circle back with you and we can maybe get our, our small subcommittee. Transportation group together, maybe three of us, um, talking through some next steps to get that organized. Does sound good? Cassandra, anything to add on that?
Uh, no, I guess if there's any, like if anyone has any really exciting focus areas that they just want to put forward, that maybe Derek, you and your subgroup or subcommittee can. Uh, take back for consideration, just as the whole of the committee is together now, if there's anyone like, I have this really exciting idea. Um, put it forward now, it would be a great opportunity just to kind of begin collecting the different focuses that potentially it could be. And as a reminder for those um, who potentially didn't attend or who would not COBAC members at the time. And correct me if I'm wrong, the focus was really the instructional, the sidewalks and types of downtown location, then on Galveston. Um, un- understanding how to use Ben Works for reporting of bear removal requests, what that would look like. Um, and uh, other, other parts of just awareness building, right? We had really great turnout from city councilors and then the evening or the afternoon. Um, came to a conclusion with um, some appetizers over at uh, El Sancho, um, and just talking about what you learned. So it it can, it can accumulate with a, with a, with a meal together or conversations. But I I think it's great to kind of keep in mind, how do we move forward um, with the outcomes, how can we apply them to the work going forward? So what, what do we learn from the walk and roll in twenty twenty five, that then we can plug in either to the work plan into to the work with the city. Um, but just kind of to keep in the back of the mind, so, yeah, thank you, Derek.
Yeah, and just for historical context, um, COCA, um, which Stephanie is leading that group. Um, that's the Regional embed Steering Committee on uh, Disabilities and Accessibility. Um, I believe it was in twenty twenty four, they organized a roundabout tour, and we did do a bus tour. And went to some of the new crossings that ODOT had improved on Greenwood, right on Eighth Street. And did a little debrief right at um. Uh, Los Jalapenos, little taco place, so, you know, we did kind of like, um, you know, explore walking across the intersection with um, you know. With a, a, you know, a blindfold and and seeing how, how stressful that was for somebody who had a visual, visual impairment. We don't need to go to that level with these events, but you know, we did kind of cover that area there, but not to say that that central Bend district isn't. You know, right for kind of exploring, especially if we're looking at a, you know, a new bridge coming over by Edbridge. Um, and kind of landing around that area, or maybe it's even on the other side of ninety seven where we have where the bottle drop is. And there's some new amenities and food carts over there, um, now that could be a good place to explore too, it's right across the street from Hawthorne Station. And that's kind of a, a, a region of Bend that's, you know, will be to, will be kind of in the, in the spotlight if that bridge comes over, so. That could be a, a cool focus area, and I think there's good food carts too over there, I haven't been there yet, but.
Just a clarifying question with the walk and roll, is that, so obviously, city people are gonna be there too, are we thinking? We're just gonna be going on a tour and everyone is gonna be walking who can and people who are bringing their chairs are bringing chairs? Or is this like a, we're going to rent chairs and have people sit in them and do the roll thing?
I think, well, that's a really good question, this is Stephanie, and and I think it could be any of all. I think in, in years past, um, and I'm thinking, you know, a decade ago, when we used to do the disability for a day. Um, that was one of the things, that the chairs were rented. And able-bodied people were using the chairs to navigate portions of the city, and I think that's very, very impactful. Uh, for people who just don't, I mean, I know it's cruel, but part of me wants to take some of our city leaders and. ODOT leaders and just put a blindfold on them, set them loose in the city and with no help. Because that's how it is for a lot of people who actually experience disabilities, there aren't always people there that are helping them navigate. Some of our more inaccessible areas, so, um, but anyway, it could be, um, sorry, that was just a little tangent, but. It could be any of that, in the past, last time we didn't have any, we may have had, did we have any chairs donated?
No, we decided to not go that route, I think, being a city event and with potential like liability concerns. That we didn't go that direction and just focused on more of awareness of like, hey, you know, how do you report a big gap in the sidewalk? You know, as we did, and we kind of showed you how, showed people how to pull up the app and report it. And that was right on Galveston, look at some of the challenges with sidewalk connectivity in the city. Um, so kind of getting it at that level, but to your question, Andrew, no, it was, you know, we had, like Carl was with us, he was rolling along. Um, so, you know, we, we just kind of did our own thing, um, and it wasn't where we had those kind of experimental. You know, opportunities, um, so, yeah, and I think to, to keep consistent with last year, I think we maybe kind of do the same spirit. And, you know, and our buses are ADA accessible, so if we did a bus trip, you know, we can, we can provide that option as well, so. Yeah, any other feedback on walk and roll? Looks at Carl, Carl, go ahead.
Just about the disability for a day thing, I think those things are useful to a point and and in a controlled setting. But um, trying to have people navigate, you know, a complex city landscape. Who are not accustomed to using wheelchair or a blindfold or whatever is kind of hard mode, I don't think we need to put that on people.
Duly noted, Carl.
Yeah, when I was blindfolded and going across the big roundabout on Eighth Street, Tulane Roundabout, that was a, you know, it was a little, it was a little scary. Um, but you know, it did increase my awareness of what it's like for someone who, you know, has a visual impairment to try to cross through a roundabout. Um, it's very challenging, okay, so let's table this, we'll do some uh, pre-work on this. Um, Carl will connect, I'll connect with Whitney, we'll get with you and we'll, we'll get some logistics lined up. So we can kind of detail this out in the next meeting. Okay, any other conversation on the work plan and the walk and roll?
Eric, um, if I could just interject, I believe that we have got City Manager Eric King, um, who had an opportunity to review your work plan. And would like to say a few words, not to put you on the spot, Eric.
Eric King, City Manager of Bend, um, first off, just thank you for the time and effort put into the work plan. As Cassandra said, I reviewed it and was uh, pleased with the kind of simp- simplicity of it, the three areas and then the real concrete actions that you've. Outline in each of them, um, I'm here to support you, so if there's some things that you need, resources, et cetera, to help accomplish the work plan. That is my job of putting the two-year budget together, so your uh, uh, group, along with nine other boards, committees and commissions, uh, with the city. Are doing similar exercises where they're taking uh, the council roles and starting to put that into a work plan, we're doing that over the next month and a half. Uh, we've got a framework council, we're gonna work for the next two-year period that will be, the draft will be shared with council next week. And then they will be voting on it on March nineteenth, and then from March nineteenth until we look at the budget, which is the first preview of the budgets in May. And then we go through a pretty significant process, it's an output in June, there's a work plan, so you know, we're ahead of the schedule a little bit of getting. Uh, details of that work plan. Put on paper, so I appreciate it and very supportive of the direction you're headed, so.
Yeah, Eric, quick question, are there plans for another city fest this summer, like state of the city, okay?
It's being talked about right now, um, some concepts that are floating around is a, uh, an event at Vince Ginnett, Ginnett Stadium. And actually, uh, maybe doing some type of uh, an event there, similar, you know, kind of a, I think, boost, city boost. Opportunity, opportunities for education, information, um, trying to capitalize on things that are, where people are already are. So we can really have the biggest crowds possible, um, to to share good information with, so.
Yeah, that sounds great, and last year we had a table there, so maybe, because, you know, we can add that to the. To the list of concepts and events that we like. Thanks, Eric, appreciate it.
Is there a rule against not doing city events, like we here, we parks?
No, no, I was just thinking, I was just thinking like, you know, Craig Park would be a great spot for it and.
We did, we did one, the last state of the city, two years ago. It was, it was a little, and I mean, it was just, it was so big and spread out. So yeah, Vin- Vince Ginnett is actually a Parks and Rec facility.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
It'll be where the new Burgerville supposedly going in.
Is that, you would know, are you like, heard it here first? Is that the rumor?
The rumor, rumor, no, no confirmation.
Any other questions? Alright, I'll still hang out here.
Thanks for your support, Eric. Okay, speaking of support, the, the next agenda topic is letters of support. Cassandra, do you want to, um, well, I'll, I'll, maybe I'll tee it up and you can kind of dig into next steps here, so it's Derek again. So we did have um, an interest for some letters of support, the first was Aaron. Um, talking about dogs off leash, and that would be at, you know, specific places where dogs are required to be on leash. Um, not off-leash dog parks and their impact on people with disabilities, we had a pretty lengthy conversation about that topic at our last meeting. And I think the committee was, um, you know, unanimous in their, in their supporting consensus that, you know, we would, we would. Provide a letter for that, um, so that's the first topic, the letter, and and this is Andrew. Uh, to the Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee, Andrew presented, it was a couple of weeks ago. Um, to, we call it RP Tech, and um, talking about inner campus transportation, uh, there used to be a Route twelve. That connected OSU Cascades with COCC, right, kind of, you know, in in OSU Cascades kind of infancy, right? When it was a, it's, you know, a growing college and it just started to be a four-year college. Um, that route had been discontinued because of low ridership, um, since then, CET has kind of changed some of the routes. But just looking at, um, you know, sparking that back up as a topic, could, you know, could we do uh, micro transit? There was a pretty successful ride bin, uh, pilot project that OSU Cascades and the city developed CET, loaned out a, a van for that. And they kind of hired a, you know, a, a fleet of drivers to, to provide that service, and so just kind of getting those. To percolate to see what's possible to be able to connect students, so, um, Cassandra, do you wanna kind of revisit that first topic? And, and, and have, if Aaron wants to chime in on that, and then maybe the next one, Andrew, if you want, you could elaborate on that. And that kind of the need for it.
That'd be perfect, yeah, and I'll just turn it straight over to Aaron, because I know he's done a lot of research and had a lot of meetings in the last month. And so, Aaron, please take it away.
Thanks, um, yeah, I was able to reach out to the Bend Police Department and City Hall to get some information on the. The specifics of the law and how it's enforced, and then today I was able to touch base with Ian who had some good ideas. I, I made back up a bit, I, I made a draft, kind of with just some rough outlines and some open spaces, um, Ian had some really good improvements to that. And kind of the nutshell, I may have let him speak, but the, the nutshell was basically to establish the problem. Um, why it's particularly relevant to people with disabilities, and then he had some action steps. And he might be better to explain that as well, but then kind of we were left with. Questions about the process of submitting a letter that, uh, how we want to have it go through COBAC and just, uh. How to get it done efficiently, so it doesn't take months and months to get done, so I think we have some pretty good ideas of where we want to go. Uh, we'd just like to know how to do it the most efficiently, now Ian, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, uh, Aaron, I, I, you hit the nail on the head, I think Cassandra, that was kind of the biggest question we had was. If a couple of us are talking offline about putting a, a draft letter together, what that process looks like for bringing that to COBAC and. You know, taking a vote on it of support and then what that looks like as far as issuing it, you know, sending it to city council. The Bend PD and Bend Parking Rec Board, um, yeah, what, what that process looked like, and then. Uh, what we were talking about is, if anyone's interested, we would kind of create a, a, a living document, a Google Doc or something. Where we could work on the, the draft collaboratively together, um, and then hopefully present that to the, the group at next month's meeting. For a vote, potentially.
I think, um, this is John, uh, we can't use Google Docs, because then if it's shared between all of us, then that's technically a meeting, so.
Okay.
The best format that I found to do is to have one of you write a letter and then present it. And then if there are minor corrections that need to be made or massive corrections that need to be made, we can talk about it as a committee, yeah.
And, yeah, and thanks, John, I think, think I'll, Aaron is the, the primary author of it. If you want to finish up, um, including any feedback that you received from your conversation with Ian. Um, and then drafting that draft, I can, I can serve as kind of the conduit or the go-between, as John absolutely alluded to. We want to be very clear about, um, any kind of edits and not, um, running into any meetings laws.
I, I think, um, Ian's changes were basically wholesale enough, that we talked about, he had, I liked the ideas he had fleshed out. And we wanted to actually reach out to Andrew to see if he could provide a blurb about, uh, how to, uh, I guess the specific biomechanics of dog attacks. And that kind of thing, but I think he had, he had it pretty much already fleshed out, I like to go with his ideas and kind of defer to him.
Great, great. I think another area, um, that could be brought to the group during this conversation, I know that there's, there's the two wings, right? We've got on one side the enforcement, and that would include Bend PD and the reporting and conversations with Ian, right, at Bend Parks and Rec. And then on the other side, there's advocacy and awareness building, and did COBAC as a committee want to draft a letter? That's separate and distinct from the actual recommendations that might be sent to city council or to, um, uh, you know, city manager, Eric King. Um, just absent and apart from explaining to the public what it looks like and the impact that it has, right? So I think the conversation we had last meeting was really powerful in the different perspectives that a lot of community members are not aware of. And so I, I think that we could do the, the things simultaneously, so if there's also an appetite to draft that it's very short in terms of, of, uh, word. Designation, but a draft a short letter to the editor, that might be something that the committee could also, uh, consider.
I feel like that Ian's ideas would kind of encapsulate both of that, both of those things, because he has, I mean, Ian, maybe you could step in, but I guess he. I like his ideas of identifying the issue, why it's relevant, and then he has some specific asks, to be, and I think having those included. In a letter to the editor, or it would, it served that same functionality, um, to raise awareness, but also be asking for something. And again, Ian, I don't, maybe defer to you on that one, but I, I liked the idea of something succinct and actually action for, asking for action steps. But that was effective.
Yeah, I think, you know, kind of the ideas I had shared with Aaron, um, focus on action items to see a positive change. But, um, we could add some additional context to that, uh, so it could also be basically doubled up as a, a community service announcement. Or awareness announcement, I guess.
Yeah, and quick question, this is Derek, so I guess Ian, is that something like Bend Park and Rec could, you know, eventually maybe do like a campaign around? Or like signage that just alerts, like it's an extra reminder of why it's important for dogs?
Yeah, there, I mean, there's, there's things that are in process and that we've done in the past. Um, and the, kind of the bullet points that I had laid out to Andrew or to Aaron, um.
Um, and the kind of the bullet points that I had laid out to Andrew or to Aaron, um. Hit, some of them hit on efforts that are already ongoing between the city of Ben and Ben Park and Rec. And encouraging continued collaboration on those efforts, um, and then some some potential. Uh, you know, avenues to bolster uh, enforcement with with the current system, so. I I think, you know, Aaron and I, we can put that draft together and then bring it to the the group for additional con- conversation.
That sounds great.
Aaron, what is the timeline on that? Are we gonna, would we wanna have that ready by the next meeting?
Yeah, Ian and I said that we like to have a goal of. You know, having a month to work on it and then having it presented at the next meeting. Um, Ian had mentioned that there's also some things that the. I think BPRD is doing kind of with spring and awareness about. Um, off-leash things that would kind of coincide well with that, so. I was hoping that we could be sooner than later, but I was hoping the timeframe of. Talk about it today, work on it the next couple of weeks and present it at the March meeting was what I was hoping for. And then I don't know. That's what I kind of questions to you, like after it's presented, how it's actually sent out and some of those. Maybe logistical questions, but if we could get it presented and approved by the next meeting, I think that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I think that timeline works. So Cassandra, if you want to note that to hold some of that time, um, on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sounds great.
And I guess. Oh, I guess we were kind of curious, just, you know, talking about. They'll say somebody comes to the letter. We want to kind of make this effectively. I'm not sure we're like trying to solicit ten different opinions or. Um, I just, I guess the letter writing process, this is kind of new to me, so I'm just trying to. Make it effective and efficient, but also people have their say without being awash in too many opinions. So I don't know if there's anybody who has experience. Writing letters through COBAC or. The way to make it the most effective, um, love to hear some pointers or what, um, what's worked in the past.
Uh, yeah, this is John. Uh, I am not afraid to admit that, uh. I have been guilty of going on ChatGPT. Saying I want to write a letter to the editor. That's at least five hundred and fifty words. And then putting in all the points I'd like to make and hitting enter. And more than a few times, uh, that spits out something pretty incredible, just saying.
Great.
This is Cassandra, and I'll, I'll also say that edits after um, ChatGPT or whatever form that you choose to. To use to infuse some of the humanity, right, of of the conversations that Aaron you brought up and the fear that. This issue causes, I think, is is warranted and necessary in that editing process.
Yeah, Ian's idea was, I guess, to open with an idea, a. Pretty big umbrella statement of how this affects. A lot of different people. Subsequently then drill down on why it's specific to people with disabilities and then go down to the ass, so, um. Yeah, I think that it 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 it's it's impacts a pretty wide range of people, and I think Ian has a very good grasp of that.
No, that also sounds great. Um, Cassandra, I mean, we already, we already voted to move a letter forward, correct, at the last meeting?
I guess we did, yes, and I think that we were working on the the drafting this last month, so yes, that that's been voted on and. We don't need any vote at this time.
Okay, great. Um, and then Andrew, do you want to talk a little bit about, uh, section B here, the? The letter to the Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee and a little background on that.
Yeah, so I'll start with the, I'll start with the background. This is Andrew speaking in council chambers. Uh, the reason I started working on this project, getting transit between COCC and OSU Cascades is because there's a. Decent contingent of students with disabilities there. Um, and also students who don't have cars between campuses that uh, would like to go between the two because. COCC has services that OSU does not and vice versa. Um, and also we have a lot of dual dual enrolled students and. Um, in a lot of cases, uh, people have needed to get to and from, but they either don't have a car, don't have a friend with a car or can't really afford the like. Thirty-five to forty dollars round trip to get a lift. Um, and so we, as a small group on campus, had started working on trying to think of ways that we could. Fix that issue because it's it's been a problem for people for a while, and I think. Like Derek had mentioned, there were services prior to the Route Twelve and then some of the. More micro transit options that had existed, but then, of course. Covid happened and then those things didn't come back. Once the at least public emergency part of Covid ended, and so that's sort of the the background of. What I'm trying to work on and why. Uh, and so recently I went to the. Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee. Did I get the whole thing?
Yes.
Nice. I went to one of those meetings recently just to share. Um, a letter ask from a group of some students and staff across campuses about that, and then also the Oregon Disabilities Commission. Voted to take up the cause, and so it was sharing a a letter of support for the project on behalf of the commissioners as well. Um, and that meeting, I think, was pretty productive. There were lots of questions and some pretty helpful feedback on. Going, you know, micro transit as opposed to the bus route specifically, just because of. Low ridership and cost concerns, which I think. Where I'm at with it is that I think. You know, either a bus route or micro transit would work great, just as long as there's something, because currently. For those who do not know, the way to get to and from campuses requires you. To take, depending on the campus that you're at, the eleven bus to Hawthorne Station and then the three bus from the station to the other campus. And it takes what at most should be like a twenty to thirty minute trip into potentially a several hours long. Journey across the city, which is not great because those two places are not that far apart. Um. And so, yeah, I guess I'm just looking for from COBAC feedback on. That idea as an idea, and then also I would be interested in. Uh, COBAC taking a more involved role in advocating for transit options for that specific. You know, area and group of people, because a bunch of disabled students who currently don't have. Other than, you know, my having taken up the cause. Have been feeling like they don't really have a voice, uh, particularly when it comes to the accessibility concerns for public transit, and so I think that it would be. A worthwhile project for us to pick up.
Um, this is John. Has there been any discussion between COCC and OSU Cascades about just running a shuttle between the two campuses instead of like having? Something that has regular stops along the route?
I've, I've talked a little bit, um, informally with Casey about that, who's works at Cascades, um. And is also on the R-PACT, um. And I don't quite remember where those conversations had landed. I think that. He had sort of initially pointed me in the direction of going the micro transit route, just so that. It could be something that also would be more of a community resource as opposed to just specific to the student populations. If that helps.
Ian, I believe at one time, John, this is Derek, that they did have that kind of prior to the, like, once Route Twelve ended, I think Casey tried to organize some shuttles. Um, but I don't think they got a lot of good, good ridership on them and they were expensive to run. Um, but I think an on-demand system, you know, works. It's just, I think, like the workforce, the vehicles. You know, that's a year-long planning effort, the funding to get it, so, I mean, there's potential and Eric can jump in here.
Yeah, and Eric King, uh, Ben's C manager, I'm happy to to forward that, um. Uh. Both concern as well as uh, desire to add that route back. We are working with, uh, Uncle BB with Bob Townsend, who runs the Cascades Transit Center next week. Um, we're talking about kind of a vision for transit. We really want to see, uh. Uh, more service, more frequent service, uh, looking at our coverage, optimizing kind of the coverage area. Um, as well as really tracking closely the legislative session right now, which includes a proposal to essentially. And the 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 proposal that we would like to see would be doubling the payroll tax. The payroll tax is essentially what funds. Uh, the transit system. Um, it's done through uh, through statewide payroll tax that started in twenty seventeen, so there is some proposals on the table to increase that much. Would allow for the funding to expand services, so. We're partnering with Cascades to to do that, because they, expanding services, adding services, more frequencies, all. Somewhat dependent upon some additional funding for that, so I'm happy to carry that forward. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Transit district.
Well, um, I think there, i- if the payroll tax does double, it does provide, and and there's also some language to. Allow for C Cascades Transit to receive those funds directly. Right now, the funds have to go through the counties to them. There's some inefficiency with how those funds are delivered. So, um, I think both things, both adding revenue and then making that make CET qualified to receive the funds directly would help do that. I, you know, a transit district is not, is something for sure that could be on the table, but I think. Um, just making the system more efficiently would be a great first step to receive funds directly.
They're all great timing. We're talking about transit districts and micro transit and inner inter campus connections, so. Lots in on the good conversation topic.
Good stuff.
Okay, anything more, Andrew, on that next steps?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, next steps would just be, I like, like I said, I'd be interested in in COBAC maybe throwing a letter or just some, you know, a. General declaration of we like this idea out. I think that would be nice, uh, but also. Like I said, I'm relatively new to the area and especially new to transit things in general, and so if people had. Um. guidances or supports that they could offer in terms of. What would be helpful next steps for me to be working on and for the group to be working on, that would be good, especially because I. Want to make sure that I'm being as effective as I can for the people who've. Asked me to take this up.
Yeah, uh, this is John. I said this at the Affordable Housing Committee. It's, you know, one of the only powers that we really have is writing letters. Um, you know, we're advisory, so we don't really have any power, but writing letters is a great way to flex that power that we do have, and so. If a letter will help, I say let's go for it.
Okay, uh, well, thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Um, and in in the interest of time, let's move on to the other agenda topics here. Um, I believe next is the roundtable. So this is the opportunity for folks to share interesting things, what's happening in their communities or at their workplaces around accessibility. Carl, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, this is very relevant to the last item that Andrew brought up. Um. As some of you know, I teach occasionally with, um, Oregon Adaptive Sports, teach adaptive ski lessons. On the weekends and, um. I know, uh, a kid, a guy who's. A student at COCC who, um, has a disability and who I sometimes, um. Have as a student in in ski lessons, and uh, he wanted to be able to take the. Uh, the CET, um, mountain shuttle up to the mountain for his lesson, but. Uh, and the bus itself is accessible, but, um. There was no real easy way for him to get from COCC to. The parking lot where that the shuttle leaves from, because it's not connected by a regular bus service, so it could be, um. And I could imagine a route that could, uh, link those two, um, campuses and also. Um. Link the, uh, park and ride lot. Um, in Colorado or Columbia along the way, um. So it's an interesting, uh, little little confluence of needs there.
Yeah, Carl, this is Derek. So, um, there are, uh, drop-offs and pickups at Hawthorne Station. They're not as frequent as the Park and Ride. That is the main. Location, as you mentioned, that's off of, uh, Columbian Simpson, but I believe there are like two runs early and two runs later, but then the challenge of getting from. COCC to Hawthorne Station, you know, and if it's a Saturday, it's going to be on a, on a less. Schedule, so, you know, there are definitely some logistics, um, but Hawthorne Station does provide, um. It starts there and then it goes to the Park and Ride, so folks who can't get to the Park and Ride.
Yeah, he looked into all those options and just kind of concluded that it wasn't going to work timewise, schedule-wise. Um.
But. I think it was done.
Uh, just quickly, before we move to roundtable, just so that I can put it out there, can I propose a motion to author a letter for COBAC for the? Transits, uh, my transit topic? Or am I not allowed to motion for that since it's my thing that I'd be working on?
You need to, but if you want to, we could.
Sure, all right, I'll, I'll throw that motion out then.
Uh, this is John, a second. Authorize Andrew to write a draft proposal, uh, about re-establishing Route Twelve. Between OSU Cascades and COCC. Yeah, if there's a discussion, I would maybe advocate like, or a micro transit. Or something there that's more flexible. I think the route, the Route Twelve.
Yeah, I think.
If we could add that into the motion.
Add, add micro transit in the motion, that's fine.
Um, okay, new discussion. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, um, all in favor of approving a letter of support for moving forward with. Um, options connecting students, uh, between campuses here in Ben. Approval of draft letter, draft letter of support, yes, I will raise my hand on that. Uh, any opposed? Not seeing anyone opposed. Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Andrew.
Yep.
Okay, so that way we have two motions for the support. We will move these forward at our next meeting and have further discussion. Okay, now back to the roundtable.
Uh, this is John Healan. Uh, the only thing I have to report is I'm doing a politics night at my bar tonight from six to eight, um. It's, the goal is to try and get people more involved in local politics and to not be so scared about getting involved, so, um. All people in the Shuts County are welcome.
Thanks, Sean. Stephanie, anything?
No, um. Well, so as, um. As Derek mentioned, I co-chair, uh, Co- uh, the COCA, which is the Central Oregon Coalition on Access. Um, and we have, um, we had a steering committee meeting last week or the week before. Um, and we're going to kind of redo things a little bit this year, um, and we are looking for membership. Um, our numbers are dwindling, and so. The Central Oregon Coalition on Access, I mean, we are a very, um, informal group, um, with the, without a formal body, but we do have. Steering committee that we meet regularly and kind of discuss, what do we want to bring to next meetings? Um, typically in years past, um. It's kind of really dynamic group, and we've had representation from communities throughout central Oregon, um, both, um, you know. With ODOT, um. Sisters, Redmond, Jefferson County, Kirk County, Bend, um, to really discuss where are the barriers in access. In central Oregon as a whole, so this isn't necessarily just a city of anything. Um, and so anybody who's interested in coming to one of our meetings, our next meeting is, um. Know that. Um, and so we're going to have new leadership too, as a new chair, I should maybe not steal his thunder.
Are the meetings advertised and recorded?
Nope, we're very, 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 you see, we're very, we see, um, we, no, we're not a, you know, a handful of government infrastructure. Um. Uh, Jordan, uh, Jordan and me, we're going to be our new chair.
I'm so sorry, this is Carl online. I'm having a lot of trouble hearing, uh, the council chambers. Can you guys begin your microphones more?
Like the. I don't know if we could know how to turn the volume, it's a little low volume, so we'll, we'll try to speak a little louder, and if you guys could maybe turn your. Volumes up on your mics.
Yeah, I I hear Derek just fine.
Oh, maybe I, I, and I'm, I'm closer to my mic now, so hopefully that will help.
Feel better, thank you.
Sorry, uh, so our next meeting is in March and that would be March eleventh. And, um. Our meetings are, uh, we're going back to our prior meeting schedules, so they are going to be at three o'clock. They're all via Zoom. We don't. We won't be meeting physically. And, um. So if anybody's interested in in coming to a meeting, um, you don't have to. Just send me an email. I will send you the Zoom link and get you on our distribution list. I mean, our distribution list is about a hundred and fifty people long. And we have about ten people who attend, so we're really looking to kind of get people more incentivized to come. Um, and share what they're doing in their local communities, um, at a state county level, I mean, a city. County level, um, and then also, um, the community members who just want to share. Where there are some gaps in accessibility, so. That's all I have. Sorry, for having nothing. I talked for a long time.
You got any updates on the side of the table?
Uh, do you want to?
You look like you're about to go first. This is, uh, this is Ian, um, just, uh, quick update.
This is uh, this is Ian. Um, just a quick update on the Miller's Landing River Access Project that COBAC um wrote a letter of support for last year. Um, we're under construction right now. Um, so if you've been down to Miller's Landing, there's a a lot of boulders and dirt flying around everywhere. And um, we're just super excited about that project and want to thank COBAC again for writing that letter of support last year. So.
Yeah, the uh, I'll be quick with mine too, or try to be, but for those of you who don't know, I work um as one of my other part-time things as the Legislative Advocacy Coordinator for the Disability Health and Employment Equity Coalition. And we've got a bill up this session that tries, or is going to try and fix the employed persons with the disability program, which is the program that provides Medicaid to Oregonians who are working and also disabled who need long-term services and supports. Uh, the program is really out of date in that it hasn't been updated in many years. And so the income and asset limits uh have not paced well with inflation. And so it's really hard to find a job that pays uh little enough to stay within the benefit guidelines. And then also it's just really hard to live off of like seventeen dollars an hour uh anywhere in this state. And so we're working this session on a bill to try and fix some of that. And we've had a public hearing and it went pretty well. So now we're waiting for like the work session and and eventual fight in ways and means, which it is going to be a fight. Uh, and so if people are at all interested in any of what I just said, please email me and I would love to tell you more about it because it's a good, it's a good bill and it will help a lot of people not lose their jobs. That's my spiel.
Okay, any folks online? Want to give a quick roundtable?
Hi, this is Amanda. I'll give a little um, a little update on our community advocacy team program. It's going to be launching um, March first with our first meeting being um, March seventh. We're supporting right now um, five, hoping to get six individuals um with diverse abilities, specifically intellectual and developmental disabilities um into our program for um civic engagement.
We have Alyssa, Aaron. Carl? I can't see the full.
Uh, this is Eric. This is Eric. I do not have any updates to add at this time.
Carl, are you good?
Yep.
Cool. All right, I'm going to do a quick update just um on some kind of transit-specific initiatives. Um, so Hawthorne Station, the renovations there are finished, but they're coming back in next week to do some, finish up some concrete work. So we're going to see a little bit of shift, but overall, um, we have um, you know, there's a little, there's a lot more I guess accessibility um with the way the new layout is. Um, and taking the the buses off of the Safeway side of the street has made a huge improvement for safety. No longer, you know, do you have to cross buses with a two-lane street and having a lot of pedestrians and people on bikes and, you know, people rolling through. So that's been a a great improvement. We have new shelters, amenities, a couple EV charging stations. Um, and we focused on, you know, placing a lot of that infrastructure on our, on our property, which has helped with, you know, our security efforts and in keeping folks on our property. Um, so if you haven't checked it out, we're exploring maybe doing the the walk and roll kind of in that area. So hopefully we'll get to check out those new amenities. Um, but it's running smoothly. And the other thing um that we're working on is um uh getting our fare policy back. We've been fare-free since the pandemic and we're looking to change that. Currently, the all services are free except CET's recreation routes, which is the service to Mount Bachelor in the summer and the winter and by the river and the Lava Butte Service. And so we're working on some some fare policies that we need our COIC board to approve. Uh, but we will start to implement fares and we'll be working with, you know, nonprofits, community members, campuses, city governments, you know, Park and Rec to do discounted um passes for employees so they can ride at a discounted rate. Um, so that's, that's going with that mobility hubs. Um, looking at the north end, there's a piece of property um that ODOT uh has owned that we're potentially purchasing and that would be kind of a north hub. And then there's the the Troy Field site, Eric, that I believe the city is going to take on some of that, some of that planning work. And and hopefully we'll see that on the ground this summer and that would be at the the Troy Field location, um, just right outside here. So that's some interesting new developments with public transportation. Uh, the other hat I wear is President of the Oregon Transit Association. We're closely tracking legislative policies, working on a proposal to increase the stiff funding and also looking at, you know, any new bills that that are coming out that are affecting transit operations or transit funding. So um, keeping a close ear on that.
Uh, we're running out of time here.
Yeah, okay, let's go to uh Accessibility and Equity Manager update, Cassandra.
Better unmute myself as a first step. Um, I will, I will try to move these quickly um for you. A little overview of a couple of pending pieces of litigation that are pretty influential and important. Um, community funding requests, which is I like to spend the majority of the time on, a really brief update on the taxi letter. Um, exciting times. And then also request as we move into the next um agenda item for emergency management to join us in March. So I will not get into this. I'll send it to um in a uh an email. But just to let you know, there is currently um a lawsuit right now called Texas V uh V Becerra, um, which is challenging the constitutionality of section five oh four. Section five oh four is really the underpinnings of where the ADA originated from. It came out in nineteen seventy-seven. It's this tremendous piece of li- li- legislation that has essentially allowed for disability to have any kind of standing or rights when we're talking about civil rights and then also discrimination law. And so it's currently under attack. There are seventeen states that have joined uh this lawsuit. Oregon is not one of them, but I want to put this on your radar. And you know that I love Rebecca Tossing. Um, she wrote a beautiful Time uh News article, um, which I'll share with you all, but it's really powerful, very poignant. Talks about the threat that this lawsuit has and then potentially um what it looks like in the future of civil rights um for other anti-discrimination pieces of of legislation. So not to be an alarmist, but this is a, this is a a lawsuit that we should be tracking and keeping a pulse on. Um, the second one is, as you know, I bring you constant updates about airlines and transportation. Um, and as you are making your spring um break plans, know that there are five um airlines that have joined a lawsuit by uh brought by the Airlines for America um uh Union, um, which are American, Delta, JetBlue, Southwest and United that are suing um because of the current rule that was put in back in December, saying that it was wrong to damage passengers' wheelchairs. And so they're suing and they're appealing and saying that actually it's not that they should be able to do that. And I, and I am boiling that down to its essence, but I thought that this headline was really excellent. It was airlines suing for right to trash wheelchairs without punishment. And that's effectively what the 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 motion, they're, they're seeking, right? So it's, it's very disturbing. Want to put this on your radar. Um, and as we continually talk about transportation to the airport and on-demand, like when we get to the airport, what happens at the airport and what happens to our mobility devices, right? That's something that's on my mind constantly and I know on yours as well. So um, this is another um lawsuit to keep an eye on. I will move through quickly. Have this wonderful um individual who's a massage therapist in our community, reach out and ask if they know of any potential funds to make sure that their massage table is accessible. Massage tables, I didn't understand or know, but they're very expensive and they can be costly. This particular um item that the individual's looking at is approximately two thousand dollars uh give or take. And so I met with um very generously Cyrus, Cyrus Mooney connected me with the COCC. Um, um, some folks over there to talk about grants potentially to share with this individual. Um, but because it's only two thousand dollars, typically the grant process is so kind of onerous and it's requirements um that it might not be eligible for that. So I thought, what a great time to bring this to COBAC. You don't have to answer now, but if you have any suggestions or funds of resources or thoughts on how we could help this community member make their um make their services more accessible, right? They're, they're currently ADA compliant. They've got the, they have a ramp. They have an accessible bathroom. Their chair and their tables are able to use it. It's just not as functional. It's kind of these automated, very impressive-looking pieces of equipment. And they really um shared narrative, saying that 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 was really brought to their attention by the disability community and people that they serve. And they want to be the best they can be. And it was just a really cool opportunity, I think, for potentially COBAC to to help support or to give guidance about where they might find funding to do that. So if you've got an idea, please feel free uh to email me. I'd really appreciate it. In the interest of time, we'll move us on. Um, let's see, um, general updates. Again, I talked about, love to have um Carrie Carl and her amazing team give us an update on the intersection between emergency management, emergency response and peoples with disabilities. I think specifically stemming from the LA fires, there are a lot of um uh takeaways that have been takeaways because of deep, deep hurt, deep fatalities and 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 terrible, terrible things that happen. So how can we use the information um to better our services and know what we are able to do in terms of emergency planning and neighborhood awareness and neighbor awareness and more of a grassroots effort? So if it's okay with COBAC, uh Carrie Carl would be able to come to present to talk about that and start conversations, which I think may be really important for COBAC to weigh in on. I know that it will be. So um, that's something on the, on, on kind of the, the horizon. Um, the ATRAC uh work plan, similar to how um we created a work plan, ATRAC also has one. And I know it's always been something we've floated around of having our two worlds come together in a more thoughtful kind of purposeful way. But so I'm requesting COBAC uh allocate a little bit of time to have Andres Portella, who's the Equity and Inclusion Director, and also their ATRAC Chair, uh Agatha Ventura, come and present what their work plan is. And and um also unilaterally, or we should say in reciprocity, I would love for COBAC to go to ATRAC, one of these upcoming meetings and present the work plan that you all are working on. Um, I think that'd be a wonderful opportunity. So that's really up to you, but um something to consider. Um, Carl, good updates on Taxi Letter. We'll provide a more thorough um conversation. I can do that offline and then also in March. But wanted to let you know that I met with the permitting and um the permitting and the permitting department had really great conversations about what it looks like. Um, they have annual reviews, um, which taxi companies and operations for, or operators for hire have to fill out. So their next review is in January. Um, and we have the ability to implement um some really nice accessibility um uh measures in there to ensure that we do have on-demand transportation that is accessible. And if we don't, then we have measures in place um to either revoke a permit or 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 look to improving um the kinds of rideshare that's available. So good updates there that I'll provide in more um kind of length. But I also wanted to share that they were deeply grateful um for the letter for COBAC and then specifically Carl, like your authorship and and leadership on that. So you all are doing an amazing, amazing job. Um, and that's evident from what you share. So uh I will, with that, um, move you forward to try to keep you on time. Um, I do believe that we have Counselor Mendez in the audience and uh Counselor Mendez, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to introduce yourself and have time to share with COBAC, I know they'd love it and thank you all very much.
Yeah, thanks so much for that introduction. I know we're running short on time. I just wanted to introduce myself. Uh, my name is Ariel Mendez. Uh, my pronouns are he/him and I'm one of Ben's uh city councilors. I've had the good fortune of being assigned as the council liaison for uh the City of Bend Accessible Accessibility Advisory Committee. Um, I'm really happy about that. I feel like it's the mission of this committee, the work is one that I think is incredibly important. Sometimes I hear about uh, um, I think misunderstandings about, for example, the Americans with Disabilities Act, which at its heart really requires people to have a conversation about uh wh- what reasonable accommodations must be made when they are necessary to participate in an activity. And when those accommodations would not fundamentally change the nature of that activity. People might disagree about where that, where the lines in that conversation should be drawn, but it is an incredibly important conversation to have that I think we often don't have. So um, two things that I will share, um, one is that we heard from the roundtable, the summit, the committee summit, that a lot of committee members hoped to have more communication with council. One thing that I want to do to further that is uh to meet with each of you in a small group setting outside of a public meeting so that I can get to hear more about what your hopes and goals are for serving on this committee. This is a pretty unique committee. And I think that it uh, I'm, I'm really looking forward to um learning. And I, and I, I guess I will finish just by sharing that um I wear hearing aids and I know a little bit about what it's like to ask for reasonable accommodations. Obviously, people have different reasons for asking for accommodations, but I'm, I'm very sympathetic. And uh, I'm looking forward to our work together. So um, don't hesitate to reach out. And I look forward to scheduling some time to meet outside of a public meeting. And just to be clear, we're going to be upholding all of the public meeting requirements. So these will be subquorum meetings, uh probably groups of three or so, something like that. So looking forward to it.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Thanks.
Thanks, Ariel.
Okay, um, agenda setting. I think we have some topics that we flagged for next month's agenda, the letters of support, um, bringing back information about the walk and roll and checking out on the, on the events, the Sprout Film Festival that kind of wrapped up some of our early initiatives on our work plan for this year. Anybody else have any items or topics to add for the next meeting? Okay, well, with that, our next COBAC meeting will be Thursday, March twenty-seventh, one and two thirty. If you guys can come in person, please do because we may have a photo shoot. So I'll look to Cassandra to see if we can organize that and and at least get a good chunk of us together. And um, Counselor, if you want to join us on that, that'd be great. Okay, we are adjourning two thirty-four. Enjoy the nice day, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.